Good evening and welcome to the 28th meeting of fiscal year 2025 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the members of the board and our staff. We have everyone here, so we can go around the table. Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Jim Davis, Member.
Sean Fahey, Member.
Maggie O'Field, Member.
And Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. On Zoom tonight, we have staff. Cheyenne.
Cheyenne Fray, Assistant Director.
And Julia?
Julia Gettle.
Thank you so much and good evening all who are joining us. First item called to order and then our staff update. Cheyenne, any updates that you would like to share with us?
None for this meeting.
Okay, great. So at this time, we can now move to our citizens speak. If there's anyone who would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, please feel free, there will be opportunity for the two items on the agenda to speak at that time. We will invite the public to speak, but please look for your choice.
Good evening, Brian Fers, 630 Brushhill Road. Just wanted to get up quickly and say hi to everybody and acknowledge that I think some of you, or if not all of you, were a little bit frustrated at town meeting with myself and one other person. And I've talked to a couple of you about it. And I just wanted to take this quick opportunity, and I will be brief, to, you know, basically say I'm going to be here. I'll be participating in MBTA as well as site plan, as well as ADU and offering comments. And I look forward to hearing how the board processes what they heard at town meeting. I also just wanted to take a quick minute to engage with you, or at least give you my thoughts on how I think we should be thinking about some of these bylaws. You know, we talk a lot about the character of Milton. I've heard all of the people at this table, including myself, talk about it. And the character of Milton is a lot of things, but one of the things that I think defines the character of Milton is the diversity of housing stock. When you drive around Needham, when you drive around Wellesley, when you drive around Hingham, Hingham maybe a little bit less, you see a lot of McMansions. Homes were taken down and converted into these big mansions, and that's fine. But I think one of the things that makes Milton really interesting is it's a community that has access to estates and to families. Garden-style condo buildings, it has 38% open space, but it also provides density in certain neighborhoods with access to amenities and access to transit. And it really can be anything to everyone and find a spot for lots of different people. My own family is in the process of downsizing. We're going to be moving from Brushhill Road to Central Avenue because we want to be closer to amenities. So it's a town where you can start in one place, move to another, and then retire to a third. And I think the more this board can do to control that, the better. I would encourage you to go to Houston Street and Austin Street and Elliott Street, walk around 88 Wharf, look at the paths that are put in place, look at the trails around the water. And just remember that when the board doesn't plan and when the town doesn't take an opportunity to make sure it has a seat at the table, we end up with what could have been 51 units with parking and lots of retail amenities in East Milton, which was certainly not the most desirable plan for the neighborhood. And instead, we ended up with almost double the number of units, a loss of parking, and no retail amenities. So I just encourage us all to think really about all of the different parts of the character of this town and try to work within what the state's mandating so that we end up with really good zoning, not placeholder zoning. Thanks.
Good evening, Matt Marong, 136 Elliott Street. So I usually write down what I'm going to say. I'm going to wing it tonight. Hopefully, hopefully I'll hit everything. I want to start out by saying thank you for having this meeting and for focusing on MBTA communities. You know, I think I raised at town meeting a concern about the accessibility of the board, also the accessibility of the select board on this particular issue. And having an opportunity to come here to hear you talk about it and also to have an opportunity to talk to you about it is great. Moving forward, though, I do want to raise an issue that has me a little nervous and I want you to maybe feel a little bit nervous as well, which is the timeframe. I think I've brought this up in the past. We have a really narrow timeframe again when it comes to meeting the requirements of the regulations that are currently in place that I suspect will continue to be in place. And so I think that, you know, in the last go-around on this, public outreach was a major complaint that people had. And I actually thought we had a fairly robust system of outreach. Tim Swinski at the time was on staff and was holding monthly meetings in order to get citizen input on this matter and get a feel for where the town stands on things. And you know how that landed, right? It ended up getting rejected. And so I want to avoid that, you know, and I want to encourage you as we move forward to really seek citizen input. I think, and I think in some ways, it's going to be harder this go-around because we don't have two members of the planning staff full-time. So I made the suggestion in an email, I'm going to reiterate it, that there are people that do this professionally. In my work in public transit, you know, we engage people who are citizen outreach professionals. It's a service that's available. I don't think it's necessarily the only way to go about this, but if that would help, that is a possibility. But I really want to encourage the board and encourage the town more generally to take the temperature of where we are because I feel like since the yes/no vote and since the Supreme Court decision has been handed down, we really haven't had much opportunity to just ask open-ended questions of the town about what they're looking for from this, about where they're hoping to go. You know, people interpret the outcome of the SJC decision in different ways. People interpret the outcome of the yes/no vote in different ways. And it would be good to get clarity on what that is and get clarity on how we can move ahead in a way that will bring the town together in the best possible way. So that's what I'm asking for here and thank you for your time.
Great, thank you so much. Cheyenne, are you seeing any hands up from the public?
No hands.
Speak on something other than what is on the agenda, which folks will have time to ask questions and speak at that time?
No. No hands.
I think you're muted, Cheyenne.
Um, can you hear me?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes. Is there anyone on Zoom with their hand up?
No one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom? Okay, great, thank you. So with that, we can move to the discussion of the MBTA community zoning. And if we could welcome Zoe and the UTIL, any consultants.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, good evening, Zoe.
Evening.
Hey there. My colleague Matthew will be joining as well. I don't know if, let's see if he's, yeah, he's on here as well. I'll go ahead and share screen. And we were thinking that tonight we could really just kind of get everyone on the same page in terms of reorienting to the work ahead and also kind of bring back up where we left off and kind of confirm together some next steps around what sort of things we should be exploring further as we move towards the July 14 deadline that was sort of set as part of the SJC ruling and then the subsequent follow-up work that the state has done. So with that, I'll go ahead and share screen.
Can I see Matthew? Yes, welcome.
Okay. So this is sort of just a little bit more detail around what I had just mentioned, which is that we thought we'd start with just going over some of the high-level points of the SJC ruling, what it means for Milton, the updated timeline that one of the residents mentioned, and a refresher on the 2023 warrant article. We'll go really quickly through that because I know most people here are very familiar, but we wanted to just have it as reference. And then we thought we would just revisit the revisions that we've been doing to the kind of 2020, you know, throughout 2024, we've made a couple of adjustments together to kind of hopefully respond to some of the feedback that, you know, came in from the public earlier. And then there's a couple of kind of things we thought we would reprise just to have available for reference and discussion before we kind of confirm next steps.
Great, so Zoe, if you could do that in about 15 minutes and then we could really sort of jump into getting to work, so that would be great.
Sure, can do. So just as a refresher for the SJC ruling, this came through in January and there's a couple of milestones for Milton. The action plan, which is due February 13th. Comments on the regulation were due February 21st. And the most important one, the compliance application, that's due to the state on July 14th. Now, that sounds like, you know, a fair amount of time, but it's actually, it'll move pretty quickly because there's kind of set delays. So we thought it might be helpful to talk a little bit together about that timeline and hear from you kind of the thinking that you have thus far on the schedule you'd like to sort of set for town meeting, et cetera. So this just is something to kind of anchor to as we talk a little bit. And it's obviously, we don't need to decide in this meeting, but I wanted to flag it because I think it's an important thing for town staff and the planning board to collaborate on and communicate to us so that we know the timeline that we're working within. So just to kind of go from the back, you know, from the end of the timeline backwards a little bit, with the state compliance deadline of July 14th, you can imagine that the weeks, you know, immediately before that, there's quite a few holidays. And so we imagine that realistically, it might, we might expect that you could try and squeeze in a town meeting the last week of June. That's kind of maybe the farthest you could push towards that July 14th deadline. That would put us, if we then do kind of the typical one-month warrant period, that would put us at the end of May for having a final warrant. So you can kind of do the math there. That's about two and a half months of working time that we have together to get to a point where we feel like we have a good zoning, piece of zoning that we can put in front of the town for town meeting. So I thought I would just kind of pause there and see if there's any kind of, if you would like to have a discussion as part of today's meeting on that, or if you want to kind of table that and let us know after you've had the chance to connect on that separately.
So Zoe, we're also trying to factor in when we can have public hearings so that we would have some complete plans that we would like to present. So factoring that in, we had sort of discussed targeting end of April, so I think these dates would align with that to allow for plenty of outreach to the public and sort of be able to allow time for people to ask questions, so.
Yep, absolutely.
I have a question. Meredith, have you talked to the selectmen about having a town meeting at the end of June?
We've not yet.
Yeah.
No, not yet. Because we'll have May town meeting, which obviously the deadline is this week to submit articles, so that's not going to happen. So there would be, need to be a special town meeting. So we would need to involve the select board with that, obviously, that discussion.
And the 27th is a Friday, so probably would be like Monday, Tuesday, either the 23rd or 24th.
Yeah, we would have to.
And I think that week of, that fourth week of May, you know, the Monday of that week is Memorial Day, which might, you know.
Right, to consider that.
Shuffle things around. But yeah, absolutely, this is not intended to be dictating a date, but more just for the sake of like being able to see that sinking. We'd of course defer to you on the, you know, the day of the week that typically is best for you to hold town meeting and all of those logistics.
Okay, great.
So then the other piece, we just wanted to do a super quick refresher, and I'm not going to go through this in detail, but we'll have this available if there's anything that we need to go back to, just to kind of go over the 2023 warrant article. It's mostly nested within the transit area and the sort of north side of the town. If we kind of zoom in, you can see the majority of those districts sort of nestled in the transit area here, and then the Granite Ave districts and East Milton Square. These are just kind of zoom-ins of the parcels that are included in those districts. Again, I won't kind of belabor this, but we can come back to it if we need to. And then in terms of just a numerical summary, this has all the numbers as they were in the 2023 article that went to town meeting and then to the referendum. And we thought we could just kind of, building from there, go, quickly go over essentially the work that we did with you in 2024, just to kind of summarize, maybe for those who are listening who weren't embedded in all of this. We worked with you to make some refinements in Granite Ave, the Granite Ave sub-districts and East Milton Square, looking at removing the American Legion Hall parcel from Granite Ave South, maintaining Granite Ave North more or less as it was in the 2023 article, but making adjustments for the overall density and unit capacity for both Granite Ave South and East Milton Square. And then we did do quite a few sort of more fine-tuning adjustments to the Elliott Street corridor, including looking at minimum lot size, the unit per lot cap, FAR, making sure that the Blue Hills Parkway corridor parameters were kind of syncing up with any changes we were making. And we did explore expanding the boundary and were able to test and confirm that that was not a particularly viable approach because of the low density of that district. It really dragged down the overall numbers and resulted in needing to get to more units across the board. So it's, that was sort of a territory that we explored together and probably is not one that we'll want to return to. And then we did also do some preliminary analysis on seven sub-district candidates that were kind of new sub-districts outside of the set that we had considered for the 2023 article. And so we do have that for reference if we need it. Just for visual, this is that parcel that we removed from the Granite Ave South sub-district. And for the Elliott Street corridor refinements, we have just a fine-tuning of the minimum lot size for the smallest tier in that sub-district. And then we sort of tightened up the FAR requirement so they're more tightly corresponding to the minimum unit size that, or the average unit size that is pegged to the model and therefore kind of it's a slightly tighter control overall for you in terms of the bulk of the buildings that could be built along the Elliott Street corridor. And we did also adjust the unit per lot max for tiers two and three, those larger lot sizes, 10,000 square feet, 15,000 square feet, so that those could accommodate four units, which helps kind of give this a slightly more, you know, a little bit more density that allows it to kind of play a slightly different role in the town overall. This is just the validation work that we did to confirm that that 6,000 square foot minimum lot size was a size that could still accommodate the open space priorities that we talked about and the setbacks that would kind of fit with the pattern of the neighborhood. So it was just kind of a case study parcel to show that those numbers work and that we're still able to achieve the open space percentage requirements that are already sort of common in that district and that we'd want to carry forward. And this is just what, in terms of that, you know, that modified minimum lot size requirement, the pink parcels here are the ones that would be excluded based on that minimum lot size because they are smaller than 6,000 square feet. So you can see that there are a fair number, but it's an effective change to kind of bring more parcels into, you know, eligibility for this particular set of zoning requirements. So it's a nice adjustment to kind of more closely match the pattern that's there already. And this is what that looks like in terms of numbers, all of those individual tweaks that I talked about. The cells that are highlighted in red and yellow are where we made those changes from the 2023 warrant article. And the numbers are kind of updated along the bottom. We've gotten closer to the unit compliance target, so we reduced the overall number of units that are modeled as this, as part of this option. And we're quite close to that 15 units per acre target as well, which is, you know, helping to kind of just, you know, no extra around the edges, basically, is what we're looking at. So this is, you can just toggle to compare with the 2023 numbers that we had. And then this is just kind of a summary of what those changes are, that net change of 52 units less townwide, and then a shift from the East Milton sub-districts of Granite Ave North, South and East Milton Square of 45 units, 445 units less than the 2023 article analysis. And in the Elliott Street corridor with all those kind of fine-tuning pieces, a net change of 393. We're also including the Blue Hills Parkway here just for comparison because they have a lot of shared characteristics and we wanted to show that alignment there. With that, that's kind of where we stand in terms of the big picture, all of the different components together. We wanted to also just have available for reference for discussion, those additional sub-district candidates that we analyzed. And we also have a reprise of some content I think Cheryl had asked to see again that we can go over in a moment. So this is the, some of, this is three of the seven districts that we looked at as potential sort of other candidates for consideration. These are three variations all along Randolph Ave. You can kind of see this is a subset of this Randolph Ave 1 and Randolph Ave 3 again as a subset of Randolph Ave 1. And then we have 711 Randolph Ave, 1200 Brushhill Road, St. Pius and Truman Parkway. And we also thought it would be worth, just kind of, you know, for both of the, for all those districts, we looked at essentially if we were to take our current, that sort of modified 2024, 2025 compliance summary with all those little tweaks that we had made together. If we were to then kind of take one of these alternative sub-districts that we're looking at and sort of bring it into the picture with one of two goals in mind, what would the, what was sort of the ripple effects be of that? So this row shows an analysis of if we were to look at each of these candidates with the goal of reducing units further along Granite Ave South and East Milton Square, what would that impact be like? And if we were to use a new sub-district to replace East Milton Square, in other words, to no longer include East Milton Square in our approach and to include a new district in its place, this is, would be the kind of the ripple effect of that. So as you can see, in general, using a new sub-district to reduce Granite Ave South and East Milton Square results in a net increase to units across the town as a whole. It has very modest reductions in the Granite Ave South and East Milton Square sub-districts, so just 68 units less in Granite Ave South, 36 units less in East Milton Square. And then if we look at, instead at using a new sub-district to replace East Milton Square, that has a little bit more potential, I think, to be worth considering if there's a real desire to take East Milton Square out of the 3A districts entirely. There's lots of reasons to keep it in, but I, we also can talk about if there's reasons why you'd like to sort of exclude it. Okay, that's, that's the end of those analyses. And then I did just want to flag for clarification because there's, there was some conversation about these districts, or not districts, these, these areas of the town that are within the half-mile station area for the commuter rail stations. There's kind of these slivers for Fairmount Station and Reedville that have a small kind of overlap into Milton. Those are, from my latest reading of the regulations, those are eligible to be included as part of, to count towards districts that are in your transit area. It does not, it is not relevant in terms of kind of categorizing what type of community you are. In other words, you know, Milton is not a commuter rail community, is a rapid transit community, but these do, you know, if there's, if we want to look at sub-districts in these areas, it does have some crossover impact in terms of the way we calculate transit area. So this is just a zoom into those little spots, Fairmount and Refill.
So Zoe, I'm just, I'm just on that question. So if we were to be classified as an adjacent community, you're saying those parcels would not be relevant as an adjacent community?
Why don't I just get, that's the next, it's a perfect segue. So we also did this analysis about, okay, in a world where Milton was able to redefine what category you're in, which right now.
In other words, if we're found not to have a subway in Milton, then we would be an adjacent community, correct? So it wouldn't be hypothetical.
That is the flow. So this, and this is the current logic. You have within your borders at least 100 acres of developable, developable land, which is in half a mile of the MBTA rapid transit stations along the Matapan Trolley. That puts you in this category, rapid transit, and it carries these requirements.
That's yet to be determined, but keep, that's, you're hypothetical, but that's, please continue.
Well, it's HLC's position, so I don't think it's Zoe's or UTIL's position, it's HLC's position.
Exactly. So when we're talking about hypotheticals, these are, just keep that in mind. So yes, please continue.
If the Matapan Trolley is not considered transit stations that are associated with that rapid transit category, then it kicks you through this sort of sequence of questions. Because you do not have any, you do not have 100 acres of developable land within half mile of MBTA commuter rail stations, you also are not a commuter rail community. That puts you then into the, this sort of set of questions. And based on your population and population density, that puts you, that would put you in the adjacent community category. So in a world where you are not rapid transit category, the flow of sort of logic would set you into the adjacent community. Again, that decision sets, sits with HLC and currently you are rapid transit. This is how that translates in terms of the numerical R estimates based on following the HLC calculation approach. If you were adjacent community, our calculations indicate that you would have a target for the minimum multifamily unit capacity of 985. And you would not have any station area requirements in this category. So that would no longer be a factor for compliance. We did, and this would be great, maybe Cheryl, if you want to add a little bit of what you're hoping to learn from this, this is a sort of a slightly updated version of some analysis that we had done when we reinitiated with you all in 2024 to help show like the scale of reduction differential between the rapid transit category and the adjacent community category. What you're seeing here is us taking the, you know, the numbers that we had for your, the different sub-districts in 2023 and showing if you were to remove these sub-districts, this is kind of where you'd land in terms of some of these key compliance metrics. I will note that this is not a compliant, both, it is not a compliant approach because you are in the rapid transit category currently, but also this is not an approach that would be compliant under the adjacent community category requirements either. It's intended to show you the scale of change and which districts might get close to that mix. There's, in particular, I want to highlight that the mandatory mixed-use and the contiguous land area percentages, as well as the acreage.
Great. Let's just, let's just pause there because I think, let's, and I'll, I'll, but I think the gold is tonight, we're going to, as a board, we would like to move forward with creating a compliant adjacent community 10% plan and discuss, I think we'll need to discuss as a board. as a board, what districts we would like to see to go into that. And then let, let UTIL take, take that information to create a plan that would meet a 10% compliant under an adjacent classification. What would that look like? And that, we would like to begin tonight, if, if at all possible. Do you, if we go through all the districts, do you have the capability to, in real time, to do some, pulling up some districts or would that, would you need to?
We don't tonight, but we can at the next time we meet. The, one of the things that is, that, the crux of the issue for this adjacent community concept is the contiguity because the Elliott Street corridor is what gives you the contiguity that, which is a requirement under all versions of all categories. And so there's, there, it's not as plug and play as it appears because when you lose some of those districts, you lose that contiguity. So it's, it's a little bit, we'd have to make a couple of sort of bigger decisions first before we could, we could do the kind of live plug and play kind of work together. But maybe it would be worth stepping back for a minute to just talk about the, the sort of, the logic of, of preparing the adjacent community scenario and also whether you're imagining that we would be preparing both an adjacent community and a rapid transit community, or if you are interested in only pursuing the adjacent community version.
I think we've said we would do, we would like to do both. I let the board talk, but that's the intention, that we would do the 10% first because we, I think there's a lot that we agree on, you know, so starting with districts that we've already all consistently have said we think are appropriate and we think we would like to see. And then, and then second, and we've also been given a directive, the select board has asked for us to look at a 10% plan. So that is the logic behind starting at 10%, but then having a 25% in the event that that is what we need to comply. Sorry, do you, I don't know, give my board members-
Well, I mean, we haven't discussed those strategies as a board, so what Meredith just put forward, I guess, is what your view is. I mean, my view is that we need to work on both. I don't think one member of the select board, they didn't take a vote. The chair asked for the planning board to, to start taking a look at the 10%, but they didn't take a vote and they haven't informed the board, you know, what their position's going to be in terms of any further legal action, but as far as we know, that the, the final guidelines are going to be issued shortly, replacing the emergency guidelines. So I, I don't think it's wise for us not to continue to advance a 25% rapid transit compliant plan while at the same time looking at a 10% plan. And with that, I just wanted to ask also, you mentioned the MM, you, you touched on the contiguous land area, Zoe, but you didn't go into the MMU a little bit. And that is the mandatory mixed use, which we were in 2023 putting into the Milton Station East and West, right? Can, so, so is there, currently, East has a business district and West has the business districts, right? So how are those influencing this in the 10% and even in the 25%? Is it, it's driving us to have a higher number of zone capacity?
To some extent, yes. It's, so the way that the calculations work, everything except for the unit capacity is calculated based on districts that are not mandatory mixed use. So districts you may, may have mixed use, but it's not required. So those are the, the districts that you see kind of above this black line here. Those are all what we've just said as a shorthand, 3A districts. The two mandatory mixed use districts that we had developed together in 2023, Milton Station East and West are below that line because they are incorporated into the calculations differently. They give you a boost on unit numbers. In other words, those, those unit numbers that are associated with these two districts do factor into the calculations, but they don't factor into, for instance, the density calculation, which is one of the metrics that Milton has struggled to reach because of the other goals you're trying to balance with this. And so because these are some of the denser districts that you have, that means that that you need to have a slightly higher density with these districts above that line in order to get, to sort of hit all of the metrics. So you can see with this like hypothetical, not actually compliant set of districts, you're actually not, because we've removed the Elliott Street corridor in this scheme, which is your lowest density district, you're actually doing okay on density, but that you have lost your contiguity, the 50% contiguity. So the, in other words, the big picture is the, the strategy that has enabled you to meet the contiguity is also the thing that has made it hard for you to hit your density numbers, which is the Elliott Street corridor as a connecting district. It helps you with contiguity, it's critical for contiguity, but it brings down the density numbers. And so you're seeing that reflected here a little bit because we just, as a hypothetical, we were like, well, if you didn't have this, you know, what would the numbers look like? So the mandatory mixed use does drive up, unit, does tend to drive up units overall if the other districts that are not mandatory mixed use are carrying some lower density districts. That's probably a little confusing still, but we can keep trying.
So if we, if we removed the mandatory mixed use requirement, that would allow us to have both the density and the continuity?
No. But it would help with the density, it would, but it would, you would still have-
Still have the continuity of the, of the 50%.
So you can see here, I've, I've flagged like cluster one, two, and three for these to show which ones touch each other. And cluster one is in the like 22 acre range. Cluster two is, I think, also in that range. I have to look at the actual acreage of these. And cluster three is in that 20 range. So the problem is none of them are close to 50%. They're more like a third, a third, a third, which is, which is an issue. So I, I have to, in order to fully explore the, the interconnected factors in compliance for an adjacent community scenario, we would need to spend some time building out a model that, you know, addresses that contiguity issue at this scale to really kind of be able to then do some of that like plug and play, live modification with you. But it's, it's doable, it's just, it's a slightly different-
Yeah.
-set of challenges. And so we need to do a little bit of big picture thinking in order to be able to play around in that way.
Would it be helpful for us to go through sort of the districts that we're feeling would, would be appropriate?
So let's, let's have, so 50% of the land area must be contiguous, so a sub-district of what land area are we?
Elliott Street at 6,000 square foot lots is where we should start.
We're going to be much more than 985 zone capacity then.
Okay, then Elliott Street, so Elliott Street at 7,500 drags down our density.
Wait, so I, can we go back just a step? How many acres do we need?
That's what I was trying to get to.
For continuity.
50.
In both cases, your minimum acreage is 50.
But that's just minimum acreage, right?
Right, so if you, if you had a collection of districts that was, let's say, 60 acres, you would need 50% of that 60 acres to be contiguous. So it, it sort of, it drifts with your overall acreage of the districts you're, you've chosen, not just with the requirement.
Okay, so if we are deemed to be an adjacent community, we have 36.5 acres within the half a mile of the commuter rail. So are you saying we only need 50% of 36.5 acres to be contiguous?
In a world where you are designated as an adjacent community, the station area requirements no longer matter. It's, the contiguity could be contiguous anywhere in Milton. It could be in, you know, along Randolph Ave, it could, you know, like to just be hypotheticals.
Yes, so how many-
It doesn't need to be tied to station area.
So how many acres do we need?
If you have sub-districts that add up to 50, you would need to have more, 25 or more be contiguous. If you have districts that add up to 60 acres, you would need to have 30 acres or more be contiguous. So it's not like a single absolute number, it's a, it's relative to the districts that you've chosen.
It's 50% of the acreage would have to be contiguous, which maybe back to Jim's point, you could accomplish that by utilizing some, if not all, of Elliott Street. You don't have to use it all.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to use it.
So-
So we could decrease the size of the Elliott Street corridor, still use it, but yet-
What you could do is decrease, well, you would, it may be increase the minimum lot size or keep it at 7,500 because you got a density of 20.5 right now and you need the land area to make the connection, but you don't want to have your, you want your density to fall somewhere around 15.
You don't want to drag it down with-
So, I mean, Zoe, does that sound about right to you?
I think that, you know, Elliott Street corridor has for the entire duration of our time together been the, the way that we have achieved the balance of contiguity. And I think it's, it's because there isn't another strategy that's emerged, that's made sense, that's enabled us to get that 50% continuity. So I think it's probably still a, a critical piece of the strategy. I realize, Matthew, I don't know if you wanted to weigh in on the, the sort of bigger picture around the adjacent community questions that have come up. I realized we kind of talked through that pretty, pretty quickly.
Oh, and just as another question, my understanding is we have requested, not just Milton, but other towns have requested from HLC, you know, waivers, so to speak. So would we ever request a waiver from this contiguity requirement? And what's the likelihood of getting it? Because if we're struggling with it, then perhaps other towns are struggling with it too. And I've said, as I've said before, if the goal of HLC is to create housing, shouldn't it be where towns need and makes sense for housing? So why does it really matter from HLC's perspective where it is in each town, if it's contiguous or not? Don't they just want units?
I'm not aware of any town that's gotten a waiver for the contiguity piece. I'm, I'm just looking at the map now and looking at these numbers. One challenge, I, I think Zoe's right, it seems like a natural fit that you'd want to keep Elliott Street in the mix. One challenge is that its density has always been quite low. So it's, it's on the order of, I don't know, nine or 10 acres per unit right now. And so that, somewhere else, that density would have to be sort of made up for, even in a, in a smaller adjacent community scenario.
Or the lot size has to go down. Can't say it enough. I'll just keep saying it. 2,000, 5,000.
So the question with doing that though, Jim, is how much more over the required unit capacity do you want, does it make sense to go? I mean, I think people have identified that there's real opportunity for some development at Extra Space Storage, which is in Milton Station East and in the bridge, that we think there was opportunity at the old building, I'm forgetting the name of that complex, Milton Hill House, I think, the old building, we thought that could be redeveloped. Milton Station West, you know, there's just some small parcels, perhaps where eventually we're still in Rias, but otherwise, you know, 131 LA is not likely to get rebuilt with these parameters and neither is 36 Central. So does, it, I guess my, my point is you, we're looking, when we say the LA Street corridor, we're looking at where there was some concern about the potential for tear downs, the, the smaller we go with the property as the minimum property size or the minimum lot size. But I do, I think that while it is one option, I don't think it's the only option that we should discuss.
And I think there's, we ended up adding to it. I think we could, there's ways that we could scale back that to give us the continuity, but-
I think we should look at it at 6,000, I'm sorry to interrupt, and then pick our other areas where we want to put units and then back off Elliott Street until we meet our density. Yeah, I think that's how this is going to work.
Yeah. You know what, maybe go back to the map, which shows all the different, because for those who are watching, you know, when we're saying Mattapan Station, the Milton Station Bridge, Milton Station East, the map that, yes, this map, exactly. So this is, this is what I think, you know, might be helpful just to, to look at in areas that we've, that we've considered. Because I think it's, the, the Blue Hills Parkway corridor is also one that we had considered because, was it Mattapan Station or Blue Hills corridor, which included Unquity House? Because Unquity House was-
Mattapan Station, right?
Mattapan Station, because that was also one that gave us the density and the units that we wanted. So-
So just back to your point though about the map, that I mentioned Milton East, West and Bridge. So those are the diagonal lines. Thank you, Zoe. And the Mattapan is that purple, right?
Exactly.
In the Parkway.
So I would say, and I don't want to speak for everyone, but I would say that Mattapan Station, the Milton Station Bridge, Milton Station East and West would all be districts that we've looked at that, that we thought would make sense.
Just as is, as presented.
Well, no, I'm just, because I, I want her to be able to dial up, down, you know, depending on what we need.
I also was wondering about the Blue Hills Parkway.
Yeah.
And because it is close, within a half mile of the commuter rail station. And then we have such a narrow strip of it there in, in a district. I don't know, it doesn't help the continuity probably because we've taken that, some of that land area out, but maybe it would-
Help to, yeah, to look at that.
It would be worth considering. I don't, I'm not sure that, which one it would add to, if it would be added to the Blue Hills Parkway or the, of the Elliott Street. But I think what you said before though, Zoe, is that we don't really want to add to the districts necessarily because that just means we have to have more higher density elsewhere because of the density level of these Elliott Street and Blue Hills Parkway.
For, you know, for Elliott and Blue Hills, those are the lower density ones for a few reasons that are kind of structural to their, you know, the pattern that they have now and the, the priorities that you have in terms of preserving or protecting that pattern. So those are likely to, you know, we can make some tweaks that kind of will bring them a little bit up or a little bit down, but they will, they will be inherently lower density districts, you know, unless we take a radically different approach. So I think it's best to assume that for Blue Hills Parkway and for Elliott Street corridor, expanding those districts with those rules will not help the big picture. They're, they're sized right now to serve that purpose. They're they're sized right now to serve that purpose of continuity of transit area, you know, within the rapid transit category and to, you know, basically get get credit for the pattern that you already have, which is a denser pattern with some level of multifamily that is present there right now. So I think it would be best to not consider approaches that expand those districts.
Right, so like, can you?
I would go so far as to say, take out the Blue Hills Parkway corridor altogether. Because right now it's at six thousand square feet and it's dragging our density down.
Is that the same as Elliot Street corridor? I think Zoe said.
Yeah, it has the same parameters. Like there, right now, we've been every time we change the lowest tier of the Elliot Street corridor, we also changed Blue Hills Parkway and vice versa so that they're matched up because they're very similar.
So in this version, Blue Hills Parkway is seventy five hundred square foot lots, minimum?
This was the original.
In the twenty twenty three version, we go to the number summary here. So in in twenty twenty three, we had both of them with a seven thousand five hundred square foot minimum lot. We in our in the modifications that we did in twenty twenty four together, we brought both of those down to six thousand square feet minimum lot size. And that's a change we could obviously carry forward in in all of the scenarios we're looking at.
What was that, excuse me, while there's, Zoe, what was that result when you reduced both of them to six thousand?
Let me back out of this for a second and get to that.
Thank you.
So this is with that six thousand. And we also made the change of the three unit. Well, we kept three units per lot for the tier one, but allowed four for tiers two and three. So you can kind of see the change by toggle between these two. This is the twenty twenty three numbers. This is the twenty twenty four numbers. So you can see that in the tier one, right here, we go from two hundred nineteen in that tier one to four sixty five in that tier one based on just that that change, just the minimum lot size change.
And on Blue Hill, I just I say two thirty five. What's the can you toggle back again?
One seventy five to two thirty five.
So for.
It's a smaller gain.
So for this, though, for this ten percent that we were talking about, can you go to that slide? It doesn't seem like that these changes would be beneficial for that scenario. They're beneficial for the twenty five percent. But I don't think we need that additional unit capacity, do we? If we go.
No, that's why I don't, yeah. I don't think we do.
I was thinking if we take it out, doesn't it help our density?
But go back, can you go back to the that last slide?
Yeah, so this is why we would need to kind of give ourselves like a fresh base because the the contiguity, so this this scheme here that I was showing before, again, was really just to kind of give you like order of magnitude change. So this doesn't meet the contiguity. And because it eliminates Elliot Street corridor, that that density number is much higher because we're really just using, you know, these districts. But I think also you'd mentioned maybe that in the districts you just listed off, East Milton Square wasn't one of them. So that's all, you know, I think there's a lot of things that are, you know, would probably be best for us to just focus. If you can tell us the things that, you know, you are trying to aim towards, we can develop a base like that we can play with together that that is set up to facilitate that.
Right.
Set of trade offs. But I think we're probably going to go in circles a little bit today if we try and work it out live together.
Right.
Because there's so many interconnections that can trip you up.
So one thing I would say to the board is that East Milton Square, we had said we don't want to lose the business district. And so if we included it, we'd want we would want to include it as a mandatory mixed use, which is we're already having a mandatory mixed use percent scenario. It's worth taking exploring taking East Milton Square out. But in the twenty five percent, I still think it's one of the options is to keep that in. And in that twenty five percent, I think another option could be to remove it and replace it with a district on Randolph Ave. But does that? So if we did that, since that's modeled at twenty units an acre, we're we're definitely then going to need probably the density increase in the Elliot Street corridor, right? Because now we've probably decreased it too much to make up from that fifteen to twenty units.
But if we go to a fresh base, which we're, this is one scenario. But if we had talked about Two Granite Ave, keeping Two Granite Ave, I think that was one that we.
But it's not five unit, I mean, five acres.
You're not able to include Granite Ave North on its own because it's it's below that five acre minimum for any zoning district that's part of a three A overlay that does not it does not touch other districts. So basically, they're trying to, there's, you know, EUHLC, the state, set forth these guidelines with the, you know, with the goal of stimulating and facilitating housing production, but also with some protections in mind to try and, you know, push communities to, you know, avoid spot zoning, you know, have some a coherent planning strategy, not just like a handful of individual.
So I'm sorry, I should have said I should have said Granite Ave North. So that would have.
Yes.
Our Granite Ave North District, not just Two Granite, but that's.
Yeah, so that one can't stand on its own. It can it can work if it's part of Granite Ave North and South, but.
So in thinking of how we would reduce the South to allow Granite Ave North?
But I don't. I think that's where they had originally said, take out the.
American Legion Hall.
American Legion Hall because the state DPW or the state property is providing the contiguous piece.
Yeah, so that was the logic, the guiding logic for this, which is basically get Granite Ave South as low as we can get it without dragging down density.
Yeah, because we would want to bring down that density.
North.
Right.
Well, it went from forty five to twenty five in this in terms of units.
Right, which is a significant difference for.
I was thinking like two hundred, one seventy five or two hundred on Granite Ave South. What does that get it down at twenty?
This is at two twenty.
I'm sorry, units per acre. If you go to twenty units per acre.
So you'd have to add it somewhere else because if you look here, we're like just like a hair away from fifteen units per acre.
Yeah, we'll definitely add it somewhere.
Any change in Granite Ave South is going to trip that wire. So we'd need to, you know, boost units elsewhere in order to bring Granite Ave South down further than what we're doing right now.
Yeah, so I just had a question. So on this, this is a PDF. And so I converted it to an Excel spreadsheet. And so I was trying to play around with this. But you guys don't have any formulas in your cells. It's just the numbers. Is there any way you could put the formulas in the cells so then we can play around with it?
So this is we so we on the back end, we have a set of three spreadsheets that are all cross linked that all have the formulas for the state compliance model as well as aggregating with the mandatory mixed use and the contiguity issues. So we have it. It is probably going to be very overwhelming to work with without us. But it's it's what we submitted for the compliance packages, you know, has all that stuff embedded in it. And it's something that we can provide if the planning board would like to work with independently. I just wanted to like caveat, it's it's a it is a cumbersome process and it's probably going to be very frustrating, but we can provide it.
Yeah, we've we've seen it. It is very cumbersome. So I was just thinking if you could somehow make it easier in the spreadsheet here.
I I think that they've got some solid alternatives that we should get public feedback on on the twenty five percent. And I don't.
Well, I'd like to get.
I think the ten percent needs to get. Ten percent needs to get to the same level of having some solid alternatives that we get public feedback on.
Which is why we need to put some work into it.
That's what we're doing.
Right, I mean, we're we're in a we're in a good place on twenty five percent.
Right, that's why we're talking about Granite Ave South, which we don't need to.
I understand. We know we're on ten percent. I just want to make sure we don't lose track of what we're supposed to be doing. We are supposed to be working on ten percent.
And I feel, and I've said it before, it's easier to start at ten percent and add to twenty five. So I would rather just focus on ten percent.
So Zoe, I think I think for the purpose of efficiency for tonight, if we give you the districts that we feel that we're comfortable, I think you've you've heard a lot of our comments and concerns about density. And obviously, we have to follow the what the guidelines have been given us. But I would like to, I think we talked about Elliot Street. So if we just review Blue Hills Parkway, Mattapan Station, Milton Station Bridge, Milton Station East, Milton Station West, Elliot. I think we'd all the seven eleven Randolph Avenue was one that if we needed, and that does meet the acreage, that you all could play around with. And then I think we had the one thing that we wanted to explore that we have not explored is the Truman Parkway. We had talked about sort of looking at that. And if we could get permission to do the Brownfield site that we've talked about off of Truman Parkway, that that it's walking distance to a commuter rail, it would be ideal. It just falls slightly under a five acre parcel. So that was one of the requests that we've made of HLC is to request consideration to an area that we feel like we could put a lot of density, new housing and walkable. And and so that Truman Parkway area would be one that I think we would want to explore and maybe be able to map out and talk to HLC about.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. So I think that's pretty clear. Let me just, I'm going to kind of repeat back to you just to make sure that I've got this right before we move on. So it sounds like for the ten percent adjacent community scenario that we're really just we're looking at this group of districts here. And we're letting go of the Granite Ave districts. We're letting go of the East Milton Square districts. And we're looking at how we can get this combination or a subset thereof to work and align closely with the ten percent adjacent community scenario. And that seven eleven Randolph Ave and Truman Parkway are potential sort of to add into the mix to see what what gets that to work.
And when you look at seven eleven Randolph Ave, do you mind over zoning it for a few more units that are there currently? I think it's a hundred that they're building now. But if you bump that up to a hundred thirty, I think you get to twenty units per acre.
So it's ninety units now.
Ninety.
And so and it's seven point eight one acres. So it comes out to, you know, currently twelve units per acre.
Yeah, so we don't have to stick to the ninety, I guess, is my point.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's helpful to understand. And just so that we kind of, I know that the obviously the adjacent, we haven't really run the adjacent community scenario as a full analysis before. So that obviously has more more to go. But I do also want to just circle back to the for the rapid transit community designation that you have now. There is, I think, it sounds like the one thing that's still of concern is the East Milton Square component of that strategy and also some desire to continue reducing Granite Ave South. Is that my hearing that correctly?
If that's the case, I don't think that we should be looking at putting the majority of that into the Elliot Street corridor. I think we're just inviting a bunch of teardowns. And I think we need to look at more on Randolph Ave. And I think there were three places that we could look on Randolph Ave that were not just seven eleven. And so I think if we're going to have that much reduction in East Milton Square, we need another district.
So the problem is, I've said, on Randolph Ave, it's really only two property owners. And both property owners are vehemently opposed to being zoned. It's not like Elliot Street where there's many, many, many property owners. So I am against looking at the Randolph Ave.
And I think this is what we need to talk to the public about because the public wasn't happy when we landed with the last scheme with Granite Ave North and South the way they were. And I think if we just move along and get to May and think that we're not going to see public feedback on these locations, we're going to end up in the same spot.
Well, don't forget. What areas on Randolph Ave are you thinking about?
They're the ones that we had that they've already looked at.
Copeland.
Yeah.
Thomas's.
Bunny Thomas.
And there's no requirement for anyone to sell or develop their property as we talked about before.
Yeah, still use that line.
But because it's only two property owners, the likelihood.
Well, here's the other thing, if they do sell, what do you want it to be? If you if you if they do sell, do you want it to be a forty B?
No, I I understand, but I but it's just two property owners.
Well, forty B could happen regardless.
It's not likely to happen on.
We might not need it. That's what I guess before we, but I agree if we do need it, that we should look at it. I just don't know in a ten percent if we if we do need it. Zoe, could you go back just a minute just to those those previous maps? Because if you're reducing part of the Elliot Street corridor to get your numbers.
Is that someone you met, Meredith?
Yes, exactly. So what I would what I would like to see, just if you're when you're running the numbers, is maintaining the the parcels that fall right along on Elliot Street, but beyond the first row of homes, because that's what you need for the continuity. Everything above, when you're looking at Elliot Street above on this map, are all single family homes. And it really is a single family neighborhood, the Columbine Cliff, part of the Columbine Cliff neighborhood that really could be significantly altered. And I think that was one of our goals is to not over to be limiting as much single family homes as possible. Along Elliot, you have a lot of natural two and three families in that area. So it does it does make sense and some that could be converted that would that it would fit right in. But so if you were to take off of those, and I'll just show sort of.
The Seri, Meredith?
Yeah, all of it out. This is Allen Circle right here. You've got Norway, Columbine Cliff, all in there. And it's large, large parcels of single family homes. And it's just a really beautiful neighborhood that that it would be nice not to disturb that if possible. Because if we don't need the units and if it's dragging us down, that's where I would recommend reducing.
So that would be, I think, for in the adjacent community scenario, that would have some advantages in the rapid transit category that you're in now. I think the before making changes to Elliot, we need to understand what we're trying to achieve elsewhere because they kind of have like, it's kind of like each of them is a unique puzzle piece. So for like pulling from one, like then we need the we need a different behavior from the others in order to fill that void.
Right.
So maybe it's helpful to think about for the rapid transit community scenarios that there's there's one scenario that includes East Milton Square. What does that scenario look like? There is maybe one or more that does not include East Milton Square. What does that one look like? And maybe we could just kind of run through those a little bit together. And then we can kind of actualize those in terms of numbers and bring that back to you the next time we meet for discussion. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Zoe, you mentioned in response to what Meredith just indicated as areas that she would like to take out, you mentioned there was advantages in the ten percent. What what advantages are those?
So right now, in your that like very crude like testing that we did, you're not having any trouble meeting your unit numbers or your your density numbers. But when we add back in Elliot Street corridor to the mix there, which we we kind of need to do in order to achieve the contiguity, that'll bring your density numbers down. And you only need a little bit more acreage. So having us a low density district with the minimum acreage that you can make possible would help the overall calculations in that environment because. Because there's a new balance of things you're trying to keep track of and keep in relationship with one another. So it's, it's that, you know, it's helping with contiguity, but you're doing that with the minimum possible acreage to sort of, you know, reduce the overall impact on density and unit numbers elsewhere.
So for what you described, was that, was that well enough explained, Zoe, the streets that you wanted to remove from that?
I think so. If I'm understanding correctly, you basically want to pull the, you want to use the parcels that are fronting on Elliott Street. And then for parcels that do not front on Elliott Street, to remove those from the district.
Yeah.
On both sides.
On both, on both sides, especially, yeah.
Yeah, so both this area that you were just discussing, Meredith, but it also, I think, would be for consistency, it would also mean removing these parcels that are to the south of Elliott Street.
Even Maple Street? Before asking the board, even Maple Street? Yeah?
I, I think if it, if the numbers worked, yeah, I actually do. Yeah, yeah, that would be great, but.
Should we see if there's anybody that's.
Yeah, that's, this is a good point. I think it was anything else from the board and we could open it up to anyone who would like to ask any questions or.
Do you need any information from us? Like if we are looking at, say, the Paper Mill, do you need to know what we're comfortable with? Like how many stories? Because.
There's already zoning for that, by the way. That's a Brownfield zoning. I don't remember the numbers.
Sorry, I'm to connect the dots. Is that the Truman Parkway?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be helpful to know for the Truman Parkway site, what kind of scale you're imagining that would be best at.
We'll see if it's in there.
So I was sort of thinking, we're comfortable, the way that I'm approaching things is what am I comfortable seeing in Milton? And so if I'm comfortable seeing it, then I'm assuming other people could be comfortable. So I'm, like 88 Wharf, we're comfortable with, I think. And that has current units, 73 units on 2.725 acres. So the Paper Mill site is 2.967 acres. So it's a hair bigger than 88 Wharf. So I would think that we could be comfortable with 73 units there.
I think you should also look at what the zoning currently allows for it. That's.
Is it more?
I'm going to see if I can find it quickly.
And how many stories are you thinking? Four?
So 88 Wharf is how many?
That's six stories. But that's.
Don't forget, those units are big. There's a lot of two beds that are.
And it's on a huge parcel. It's on a lot of, there's a lot of open space around it and it's set down low.
So does, so Paper Mill, doesn't that sit down?
Cheryl's looking it up.
The Paper Mill site is set down.
It is slightly.
Isn't it? I've never walked it, so I don't.
Where's the Paper Mill site?
Truman Parkway.
Off of Truman Parkway. It's heading towards.
Off to the right inside.
Yeah. Right, it's near DCR property. There's a DCR strip parcel.
There's a bridge in the back.
Yeah.
So it allows an FAR. Allows an FAR of 1.2. Let's see what else. 30% open space. And trying to find height.
Just to be clear, that a property has train tracks and a river separating it from Milton, which is something Tim brought up in the past.
Yeah, thanks for reminding us of that. It's definitely something that we'll need. There's some contiguity questions that we'll need to explore with the state to understand how they would interpret it. Because it's kind of a unique case. But if there are some, you know, some of those kinds of issues we'll need to work through. But I think it's helpful to hear what the planning board, you know, would imagine for that site. And then we can work in parallel to understand, you know, if it's something that we can include, that it would be, you know, eligible and contributing to a 3A district. We're expecting to do that soon.
Sorry, Zoe, interrupt you. The number of housing units on the Brownfield for this parcel, this parcel zone of the Brownfield, 90 units. And it says height of 55 feet. And total lot coverage, no more than 40%. So that parking and buildings. So you'll find that if you want to look in the zoning, it's 275-3.11, the Brownfield plan unit development.
So it's more than, current zoning would allow more than the 88 Wharf and 73 units that I just said. It's allowing for 90 units.
And 55 feet is.
But likely they'd be smaller units compared to.
What's the acreage though of that?
Acres?
Of this, I have it at 2.967.
There might be some wetlands there with the river.
Yeah, and the problem with getting to 5 acres.
For the, as part of the larger, like Truman Parkway district here, there is, there are significant wetlands. The, this is including, you know, the site that is across the, you know, train tracks or the kind of right away there. And also these parcels here. So it's not a perfect one-to-one match for the specific parcel you're talking about. But this is the sort of acreage differential that we saw based on the wetland presence there. So 13.7 acres for all of these parcels versus 8.1 acres that is upland, non-wetland, developable land.
Okay, great, thank you. So that, I think we would like to see that looked at. Jul, Cheyenne, are you seeing any? I guess we should ask, if there's anyone from the public who would like to ask any questions or online or in person, we'd be happy to, yeah, have you come forward, please?
Hi, Ryan Furze, 6:30 brush over. I had a question and then I had a comment. There's a lot of discussion on Truman Parkway on the Paper Mill end of the street. I'm looking at Truman Parkway on the other end towards Boston, the Stop and Shop end of the street down by Fairmont. And there seem to be a lot of large parcels down there along Truman Parkway, including the brush, I think, brushwood? Brushwood. So I don't know if we ever looked at brushwood. But that is certainly a large parcel that likely is fully developed, but may be able to be included in zoning to get some density that would be needed. So.
It was mentioned at one time, but we never really followed up on that.
Yeah, so and it looks like, I'm looking at the map and I can't share it with you, obviously. But I don't know exactly how they calculate the half mile, if it's by, if it's by bird's eye or by travel. But it's certainly within a half mile of the Fairmont station.
Yeah, I think on the, on the Truman, I think it barely, it just makes it on that side, yeah, by, by the way, crow flies.
That is a fully developed site, condominium owned. It's going to be very hard to, you know, make anything happen there. But it would be a good place to be able to show for the count, the density. The comment I had was just on the edges of the district and what you're showing on the map as far as what's covered. I actually think that it was a good call out to look at some of the properties that go into the Columbines and say, you know, realistically, you're not getting anything out of those. And probably no one's going to want to see, you know, a lot of density, more, more density than it's already there today. But I would encourage someone, maybe its staff, to look at the very edges of the boundary and where there could be logical stopping points instead of what may be arbitrary and maybe it wasn't arbitrary. But I'll use Central Avenue as an example. The Milton Housing Authority owns a house that's probably 400 feet out of the district. It's on a large lot with a small, single-family home or multifamily home, excuse me. It's thinking about whether bringing a spine down to that location, which has a cost. If that helps at town meeting, defend the way you're thinking about this with the advocates for MTA zoning. Because I think you need to, we need to be thoughtful about what happens at town meeting and what just happened at town meeting. And making sure that you're looking at both sides of the equation. And you're not just looking at people who are afraid of density, but you're also looking to satisfy the people who are looking to have more density. So that you don't have someone say, geez, I'd really like this lot to be connected. And suddenly you rule out of scope and we're into another, sending it back for further study. So that's just a comment I have of really thinking about having someone take a look at those edges and make sure that they're thoughtful about where we're putting the stopping.
So I brought up the fact about possibly coming up to the Goddard School on Central Ave.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure where you're buying on Central Ave, if that would.
We have discussed it.
So if, because of Goddard School ever went out, that might make a nice, and to your point, there are some oversized houses along there. So I don't know if coming up to Goddard would make sense.
Yeah, it's just, any, just having the logical endpoint as opposed to sort of saying, I mean, that might just be where school street stops. That might have been the logic. But I think thinking about a landmark like that as the endpoint might help get, get through the, making sure that the town meeting believes that this is really well thought out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we have to watch the large lots, that's what kills it. Because it adds to our, the identity denominator.
Okay, anyone else? Cheyenne, are you seeing anyone on Zoom?
Not as of now.
So when we discuss a 25% plan, are we going to get the opportunity for more just to add districts?
I think so.
Right now, we're discussing ten, and I think we're pretty happy with our districts. But if and when we get there.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate to, yeah, if we want to, if we need to add more districts and.
I'm just going to hold off on my list for a while.
Yeah, because I know you have some, that's. All right, anyone else? Yes.
I could add, just a question. I think we had, it sounded like there was a desire to also look at a version of the 25% rapid transit compliance approach that did not include East Milton. And I think that would be, you know, we would have to come up with something to replace East Milton, the role that East Milton Square is playing in the current approach. So that would be a case where looking at some other sub-districts that we think have a really good logic for them to swap in for East Milton Square would be something that would be productive. And maybe is something that, if the planning board members already have, like, specific districts that you would like us to consider for that, that's something we could come back to you with the next time we meet with sort of an analysis on, on what does it look like to include one of those instead of East Milton?
So Zoe, when you had done that before, you had done it in that, you have this, that slide that shows, I think there were seven districts that you looked at that if you swapped out. And it sounds like all of them worked.
Yeah, so that's where it's, it's really starts to be more about, you know, which one do you think has the strongest planning logic? Is there a specific density that you think is appropriate at that site? It seems like there's a lot of interest in the Truman Parkway site. And so I'm wondering if it would be, you know, once we get clarity from the state about whether there's any contiguity or kind of eligibility issues with that site, we could maybe plug in a scenario where we swap the Truman, some version of the Truman Parkway district in for East Milton Square as an alternative.
I just also want to point out that those alternatives that were looked at before, so we just talked about Truman Parkway. But in your analysis, you said you would need 213 units there in order to swap it for East Milton. So where the zoning's 90, now we're talking about 213. And then it's 90 also on 711 Granite Ave? And you would take 213, yeah.
It would be 213 across that collection of parcels, parcels, not just that one parcel.
Okay, all right.
So I think, I think, so we don't, not to confuse folks, because I think we want to have a 10% plan first. So I appreciate you considering all of this and what we would swap out eventually with the 25. But I, I really want us to be conscious of, let's get to a 10% plan as quickly as possible. Agree on that and then move to the 25%. I do think all of this is good in looking at if we need additional parcels. But I feel like we have a really good core of parcels as it is.
As it is on the 25% you're saying?
On the 10%. So let's just put, let's keep focused and keep our 10%. And that's what we're going to try to get to. And then once we have that completed, then we.
Then we can have public outreach. So we need public outreach then on the 10%.
And then, in the 25?
Yeah, so.
And being mindful of our schedule of keeping.
There's no way we're going to have time to do them sequentially. We have two and a half months. And I think there's no way.
I would like to have a plan by the next meeting. I would like for Zoe.
I think to Cheryl's point, though, we can get outreach on both at the same time. Let's get the 10% complete and let's let the public comment on both of them. Let's not, let's not wait, right? I think that's what you're asking, yeah.
One, my point too, is I think we already have options for the 25%. I don't see the need to do alternatives necessarily on that except being able to really explain it to the public along with the 10%. Because, you know, we, I think there's a couple viable options there already on the 25%.
I've got plenty more we can look at, unfortunately.
All right, so that.
We have two and a half months.
Next meeting, we'll look at them.
But we've done a lot of, we've done a lot of work on these, so I.
No, I mean, but.
To your point, so I just don't want to confuse people going back and forth saying we can tweak this or tweak that. Let's create, let's create one plan and a.
Yeah, no, it's good.
So maybe with that, it would be helpful if you could share to me the next time that you'll be meeting. I want to, I want to be mindful of, you know, we can turn things around pretty quickly. But if there are analyses that we know, like, you're going to want, you know, in three weeks, I'd love to just go ahead and start on them so that we don't end up with a crunch when we really don't have enough time for you to actually look at the analysis with us. Because there's going to be, you know, there's going to be a little bit of, you know, lag here. There's some things that we can do live with you in a meeting. But there's some things that really require a little bit of added homework on our end to make sure that we're cross-checking everything appropriately before we're presenting something to you. So that's a little bit why I'm pushing to, on our end. It doesn't mean that we need to be discussing them fluidly with the public. But I think it's important to be responsible for you, to make sure that you have what you need to get this done in 2.5 months, that we're getting as many of the alternatives that you know you need information on. So that both the 25% and the 10% versions are equally ready to go. And while I feel like the, the rapid transit 25% is very close, there have, when we presented it last time and this time, there are things that are still not sitting fully comfortably with all the planning board members. And so I don't think that that's at a point where it's ready to go to public comment. If there are, public comment meaning like a survey about alternatives, if those alternatives themselves are not resolved to the point of the planning board itself feeling like it's a good opportunity, it's a fully resolved option to present to the public.
So can I make a suggestion? Zoe, on the, you had the slide that had, it's called the 2024 working scenario. And then on the right side has townwide minus 52 units and East Milton minus a certain number and Elliott Street minus a certain number. And then you had the sub-district, alternative sub-district. So can you prepare a chart? So if you go to your page, yeah. So can you prepare a chart like that that substitutes out for East Milton Square, Truman Parkway, 711 Randolph Ave? So those would be two different alternatives. And then also Randolph Ave 2 and St. Pius, just so that we have them all at the same level?
And I actually thought Brian's suggestion. And I actually thought Brian's suggestion on Brushwood is something that we should look at, the Brushwood Estates.
333 Brush Hill Road.
It's, yeah, that, Zoe, that address is 333 Brush Hill Road. Which is also off of Truman Parkway.
Yep, I can take a look at that.
And I don't know, that might be one of those sites, which is like 1200 or, or Fuller Village, which has so much land that it, it brings us down. And we, we would have to create so many units. It could be, I don't know the acreage on that, but that would be one that maybe you could look at in the meantime, so.
And then I just had, and I know this would take longer, but I've said before that we, I'm not sure that we fully flushed out the Blue Hill Ave site. And I'm wondering if we take some of Columbine and shift it to Blue Hill Ave. I don't know if that would be beneficial or not. I think you looked at that before, Zoe, and, and, and maybe it was because the minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. But if we have a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet now, would that make some sense?
Yeah, it's right there.
We just look at that a little bit.
But I'm, I'm just thinking of the boundaries actually. So if you adjust the bound.
The boundaries to Columbine?
Remove, remove some of the Elliott Street and remove some of the Elliott Street boundary and add some of the boundary to the Parkway area.
Oh, I get it. Grow the Parkway, not necessarily towards the front. Yeah, yeah.
I think they're pretty, so right now in this, you know, area where we have these like three sub-districts coming together, the Matapan Station, Elliott Street and the Blue Hills Parkway corridor. Let's see if I can get this to, apologies for this fuzzy image here. But, so this is where they all come together. Because these are small lot sizes and they share the same, like the, the smallest lot size tier is very similar between these two. I don't think you'll see much of a change in terms of number output from toggling these parcels between the two districts. Were you thinking also of expanding?
I was thinking of expanding towards Blue Hill Ave and Brush Hill Road. And just, just to, just to see if the 6,000, I know it didn't help us before because they were below the minimum lot size, so they didn't qualify. So they were adding land area, but not unit capacity. But with the 6,000, I'm just wondering if that's the, still the case.
Yeah, I think it would be less so, but I think it would still be both, both Blue Hill Parkway and Elliott Street are the lower density, kind of like DNA of the, the parameters that we're putting in. So I think it, it would, it would be adding more area at a density that's lower than what East Milton Square is.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was just thinking of adjusting from Elliott Street to Blue Hills Parkway, not really for East Milton Square, but, okay.
Oh, you, you mean like to be able to reduce the, the area of the Elliott Street corridor?
Right.
I think to do that, you have to go down to 5,500 or 5,000 square feet on Elliott Street.
All right. It just was a question.
It's, uh, this might actually help a little bit with seeing that. So these, this is the 6,000, the pink parcels. And again, sorry for the blurriness. It's the best way I can zoom in for you. The, the pink parcels are ones that are below the minimum lot size of 6,000. So those are ones that would be excluded in their entirety. They would not generate any unit. So you can see here that there's a fair number that would be excluded in this area here because of the geometry of the streets. So I think, I think probably this, this wouldn't play to our benefit in terms of the number balancing act that we're doing. Even though it has other good planning logics.
Okay.
All right. I think this is a good place. And, you know, of course, you know, anyone from the public who has any comments or anything that they would like to send in, please feel free to send in to Cheyenne and she can share with the, the board and.
So I think Zoe had asked when we thought they could, would be coming back and then should we schedule some?
With the 20, because we do have, we, the 13th is absolutely full. The 27th, Cheyenne, what do we, do you know offhand? I know we have, the A and R has requested to come back on the 27th and will, you know, depending on our public hearings, we've got a couple next week. We don't have anything set yet. So would the 27th be too early?
But that's using like a month, right? It's like using four, two, three and a half weeks.
I, I would say it's, we certainly can do it. I would sort of tend to agree that I think we want to move as fast as we can with you on this so that you can get it out for public input because, you know, if, let's imagine 27th, you need like maybe a week after that to package things up, get it ready to share for a public input. That means you have April. You know, usually it takes at least two weeks for people to even register that a public input opportunity exists. You want to, I would imagine you'd want to have it out there for like two to four weeks at least. That puts us at the end of April. That means we have like a couple of weeks before we'd have to finalize for warrant.
I mean, we could do it. I sort of like having MBTA just on its own night and not, nothing else.
So I think if we scheduled a meeting.
The 20th?
I was thinking even, we don't have to limit it to a Thursday, right? Tonight's a Monday.
Yeah, I was gonna say the third Thursday is Climate Action Committee. So I've missed a couple of them when, like last month.
What about the seven, well, that's St. Patty's Day, so I don't know.
Yeah, probably not the 17th.
How about like the 18th, which is just about two weeks?
Yeah, let's do it.
Would the 18th work for people?
I think that works for me. Let me just do a quick cross check here. Yep, I could do the 18th. Does that work for you, Matthew?
Yeah.
Okay. Cheyenne, that's good for you?
Yes, that's good for me.
Okay. All right.
Okay, that's, sounds good.
That's great. Then we'll plan on scheduling that for the 18th is, is terrific. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good one.
So the 18th, so the next item moving on our agenda is I had just added the zoning articles for discussion. Which really, it's not really a discussion. We have until the end of this week to put our articles forward for the May town meeting. So I just, if folks wanted to feel comfortable, we, what I would propose is that we vote to send both the ADU and the, and the site plan approval articles to the warrant committee for, for May town meeting. We will have a public hearing process and, and we will put it on the agenda. I was thinking about that for the 27th. Having that to discuss, open the, sort of start a process of our discussion of anything that we would want to amend. My recommendation is that since we accepted and the warrant committee accepted and the proponents accepted the, the amendments that, that they had requested, that that is, we put those as we had proposed to, to send to the town meeting floor, those full articles. Including the red line items for, to send to the warrant committee.
Is that kind of the only edits we'd be doing or we'll be?
No, I think, I think we would want to, we would want to have a public hearing process and listen to what the residents, if there's anything else.
I would like, sorry.
Yeah, to, for people to add things, so.
I would just like to suggest that we invite Brian, Marion and Kathleen in to come and review their concerns with us. So that we can see what we can agree to. Also, I wanted to point out that Kathleen had mentioned separating the design standards out and putting them in the rules and regulations. And I was looking at Weston's site plan approval process. And they also, they do that. And then they also have different levels of review. Now that we have a little more time, right? And you were, I mean, others, I think had brought this up before, but since we have a little more time, maybe we, we, we do split that out into tiers. Now I think some things that people react to, like, do you really want to put an applicant through that? You know, like ADU could be one thing and it's relatively limited. The Dover amendment could be another thing. And then site plan approval that comes through, you know, something like the businesses might be even different than that. And then the one thing Weston does, what is by size, so up to a certain square footage. It goes through one level and another square footage and another. So I can send Cheyenne the link to Weston's and maybe we all can take a look at that and see what we think. I'm sure there's other examples, but that was just one that I had seen.
I guess the consideration is if we want this for the May town meeting, you know, those are significant changes to the article that we would be sending to.
One thing about, well, you.
Is that a big deal though, if we have significant changes? Is it just a matter of us getting it done or is it some kind of a protocol that we can't send back an article with significant changes?
If we're sending it over to the warrant committee for review.
It has to go this week?
It's 27th is the deadline.
Cause I'd like to hit the waivers a little harder and make it a little easier to, to get a waiver to get out of.
Well, if we had a special town meeting for the MBTA community, is what about having site plan approval as part of it? And ADU, because we may have more from the state on the model bylaw by then.
You know, we're probably not far off though from having an ADU that's acceptable to everybody and the same with the site plan, you know, article. You know, my suggestion is, I mean, the reality of it is the warrant was issued at least four weeks to the entire town. You know, before the meeting, we could have had those comments long before when we received them.
True.
So, you know, and, and had we had them beforehand, we would have passed those articles in town meeting. They weren't that complicated. My, my, my opinion is we haven't helped the town of Milton as a town meeting party by not passing those. We're not in a better position as a town waiting until May to have both of those. So in the interest of moving quickly, if there are residents that have comments on either one of those, I think they should send their comments to Cheyenne and to you. So that they can be dispersed to us and not wait. We, we can certainly do what you suggested. And invite the members that have already expressed an interest to come and meet, but let's have their comments in advance. So we're, we're moving more quickly. We get bogged down in these meetings with, and lose a lot of time. I think Brian's already expressed his comments and I think we've already accepted his comments and Bob had identified what was in scope, what was out of scope. So we're probably already heard a lot of it. Let's just move more quickly and see if we can get it done.
But the, what was out of scope before is no longer out of scope, right? So we're gonna have to discuss that.
On the table. So we accepted most of what Brian had. So, but.
He started at a town meeting and recommended that the town meeting vote on it. And then they were so confused by the time we got to the town meeting that they turned it down.
It was simple changes. They really were.
My experience has been though, anytime there's zoning changes on the floor of town meeting, they get sent back for further study. Just because zoning, people don't feel as, I think, fluent with the language of zoning. So any change they want to have time to look at.
It could be true, but you also know how simple those changes were. They were really simple.
Some things like 10 parking spaces net new are simple, but other things are not.
They weren't, those were not complicated, Cheryl. They were not complicated changes, but regardless.
Kathleen had some other ones though that were different than Brian's, so.
So, so let's not make it a longer process than it needs to be. I think if we allow people to submit, you know, on both of those articles, what their concerns were, so, so we have it and then let's be a little bit more productive.
Yeah, I agree. So, you know, I was pretty frustrated at town meeting and to Sean's point, all town meeting members and all residents, how long have we been working on both these articles?
Maggie, that's been the case as far as I.
Yes, I understand. Yep. But just because that's past practices, I like to improve on practices and move forward. And I had a couple of conversations with town meeting members and I was frustrated. And I said, well, how come you have, didn't review them? And they said, well, I had, I was busy at work. Well, we're all busy at work. We all have jobs. We all volunteer. And, and I think town meeting members in particular should do their homework. And yes, zoning is complicated. And if they really cared, they could have watched the warrant committee discussion because we were there with the warrant committee. And I, in past, as a town meeting member, if I was not overly familiar with something, I would read the warrant committee's comments and take that to heart and know that they are the ones who did the vetting. So if I was not able to do my homework, I would be able to rely on the warrant committee's recommendation. So I was frustrated that town meeting didn't do their homework. And for some reason didn't have the capacity to understand the, some of the changes.
Well, one thing I would say is, you know, it could be beneficial to do a presentation for why we're doing the zoning that we're doing in advance before we even consider talking about amendments.
Presentation where?
At the floor. Like, you know, this town meeting was different too, because people have presentations. I went to the town meeting website and I reviewed everybody's presentations, but hardly any of them were actually presented at town meeting. When we did the Milton Village overlay, we did a webinar. And we did a frequently asked questions and we asked the clerk, Sue Galvin, to send it out to all town meeting members. So that they could watch the webinar, they could read the questions, they could send questions in to the board before town meeting. So, and then we gave a presentation at town meeting explaining what the zoning does. So I think it's, we need to look upon ourselves too, to do a better job of, you know, telling, telling me why we're proposing zoning changes, right? So particularly on something like site plan approval, where it's not like it's going to change someone's zoning in their neighborhood. It's really about process. And so I, I just provide that context because, and I mentioned it's been done before because I've been in that frustrated position a number of times where we've brought zoning forth and, you know, so it just takes one person to come up and, and have several questions about the language of zoning. Then town meeting feels, feels like that it, it just needs to be sent back before it comes back. Or before they should be asked to vote. And that, and it's fair in a way. Because like Peter Mullen said, you know, words, you know, when you're an attorney, a few words in a different place can matter quite a bit. And so they, you know, they want to do their homework and read it and have the chance to read it, not just on the screen and, and make a last minute decision. So I think that's fair. And I think it's fair to have comments sent to us before. And it's just difficult to get people honestly to have their attention before town meeting.
Well, it is interesting.
During your presentation, you're like educating the minute of.
You know, we, we're in a planned wood meeting, so it's not about town meeting, but, but the reality of it is if, if town meeting members are coming in, not having read the warrant, having had it for weeks. It's difficult to serve your duty as a town meeting member, so.
I don't know that that's the case. I think.
I don't know if it is either, but as I said, it was pretty, it wasn't complicated what we were trying to do. I, I think it's probably not good use of our time to continue talking about this here, but, so if we need to vote, I'm happy to vote if that's what you need us to do.
I would entertain a motion to move the articles to the May town meeting, invite, you know, I would agree, Cheryl, I don't want to get off track, but I would make a motion to move our articles as amended on the town meeting floor to the May town meeting warrant.
I'll second.
I think you should probably say what they are.
Oh, for the ADU, the ADU and site plan approval.
Quick discussion. When you say as amended, do we get the chance to edit, further edit?
Correct. Yes, yes, we will. And we'll, and it'll be a public hearing process. This is more of a formality just to get them on.
Okay.
In by the 27th.
I'll maintain my second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So.
Who made, I'm sorry, who made the first motion?
Meredith.
Okay.
Seconded by Sean. Discussed by me.
Okay. Okay. The last thing I just was going to say before we end, I did want to give a reminder to everybody that we do have a public forum on May 11th at the Milton Arts Center. And that is open to the public. We hope everyone attends. They're doing their best to make it hybrid, to make it accessible to everybody. But that will be next week.
May 11th, you said May 11th.
I'm sorry.
March 11th.
March 11th.
On East Milton.
On East Milton, the overlay zoning, yes. So this is an opportunity for a public forum that will be going. We've already voted to send this. This will be on the May warrant for town meeting. That's already been voted and sent over, so.
Seven o'clock?
So 7:00 PM, correct? Julia, it's 7:00 PM?
So do you think we, maybe we should ask Sue Galvin to send out a reminder to town meeting members specifically? Because if it's going to be on May Town Meeting, it's another zoning article. So all you town meeting members who are listening, you're going to have a busy May for zoning. So we encourage you to attend and ask questions.
So I think, yeah, that we could ask Sue Galvin to just send out a notice that that discussion's going to be in the, what's covered in the zoning in the May.
Cheyenne, would you be able to do that? Send an invitation out? I know you all have put a Milton Times article together. There's various places and flyers, I believe. We were also going to send something to, to the East Milton Neighborhood Association. Did you hear back from anybody over there?
Yeah, it's been sent to Milton Times, Milton Scene, East Milton Neighborhood Association, and then I think the Everything Milton Facebook page as well. And I think Nick Connor has posted on the Facebook and Twitter for the town.
Can you also make sure it goes to the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, that's on our list, too.
Okay. Great. But that's great, yeah. We'll send, ask Sue Galvin to send out a flyer inviting town meeting members to attend. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.